I'd like to call the order of meeting of the President and Board of Trustees in Machesney Park, Illinois for Monday, August 4th, 2014. Please stand for invocation led by Pastor Heath Tippett, First Baptist Church in Machesney Park, and Pledge of Allegiance led by trustee James Kidd.
Father God, we thank you for this night. We thank you for your word. James 1:5 tells us if any of us lack wisdom, let us ask God. And so tonight, I just pray, God, that you would give wisdom, you would give discretion, you would give understanding. We thank you, Lord, that you're the provider of such things. And, Lord, we pray that you would continue to strengthen this village underneath the leadership that you have given to us. And, Lord, let us as citizens be responsible to pray for our leaders and to be actively involved. We ask your blessings on this meeting tonight, in Christ's name.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk take a roll call, please?
Mayor Bowlin.
Here.
Trustee Snodgrass.
Here.
Tammon.
Here.
Kidd.
Here.
Wilson.
Here.
Yo.
Here.
Beck.
Here.
Clerk is present, the attorney is present.
Thank you, Lori. We have a quorum. Next is approval of minutes from July 21st, 2014, board meeting. I entertain a motion to approve.
So made. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion or changes? I see none. All in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Motion is carried. Next, we have the treasurer's report. Steve Johnson.
Thank you, Your Honor. This weekly treasurer's report reflects what the village received in MFT funds of $45,741.30 and building of Sisti funds of $335,705.73. The total of all funds this evening is $10,137,979.46. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Steve. I'll entertain a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? The treasurer's report has been accepted. Next, we have communications. Lori Mitchell.
Thank you, Your Honor. A few things this evening. The village has received a communique from NICOR informing residents that August 11th is National 811 Day. What that means is that it's very important to contact Julie by dialing 811 before digging to reduce the risk of striking underground utility lines and potentially causing environmental or property damage, costly delays, or personal injury. This free service can be achieved by calling 811 before digging, and that is required by law. The village also received an email from Winnebago County Health Department urging parents to make sure area schoolchildren have the required health services before school begins. They will be conducting their fifth annual back-to-school health clinic on Wednesday, August 13th, from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m. To receive more information, call 815-720-4213. Or to make an appointment for physicals, immunizations, or dental exams, call 815-720-4370. And the village and the administration are asking all residents to be alert as school is getting ready to begin. This first day of student attendance in the Harlem School District is August 13th. Please watch out for our children. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you, Lori. Next, we have warrants. Trustee Snodgrass.
Thank you, Your Honor. I present warrants in the amount of $329,529.46. They were reviewed and recommended for approval earlier this evening at Administration and Finance, and I move for their passage.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I hear none. Will the clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Snodgrass.
Aye.
Tammon.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays.
Thank you, Lori. Warrants are approved. Next, we have administrative reports. First, I'd like to say congratulations to all the recipients of the lottery drawing tonight, and I especially want to thank Tammy Scott, the grant writer of that. She worked very hard on that. We really appreciate that. A reminder, tomorrow, Tuesday night, between 5:00 and 8:00, is National Night Out. Everything is free. You don't need to bring any money. There's food and drink. The police department will be there, the fire department, the Ferris wheel will be up, and you can meet Rockford Peaches, Helen Waddle White. I always call her sis. She likes to be called sis. There'll be a lot of drawings. Penny informed me that we have some 40-plus gifts for drawings during that. Bicycles and gift certificates. So call your families and get everybody to come out to our National Night Out. This is a great opportunity for everybody to get to meet your neighbors and so forth. So again, that's tomorrow night between 5:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. It's on the corner of 173 and 251, on the southeast corner, the same place it was last year. Come out and have a good time. On another note, we recently had a July 26th event at Machesney Town Center, thanks to nonprofit organization Friends of Machesney Park. We had a lot of entertainment there for all age groups. The mix of the music was about 50/50. There was gospel music involved. There was some rock and roll. There was some jazz. There was some music for your soul. There was a little bit of everything there, and we appreciated everybody that participated in that. The sponsors of that were just great. They really come to the table for us, and I won't go through and name those. But I do want to say thank you to the nonprofit organization that stepped up to the plate and made the first family festival event in the village of Machesney Park since its incorporation. I encourage other people, nonprofit organizations, et cetera, to follow this role and bring events to Machesney Park. This is our home. This is where we live. This is where most of us work. Let's make it work for us. So thank you for stepping up to the plate. Next, we have attorney Tom Green.
I have no report tonight, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we have village administrator Tim Savage.
Thank you, Your Honor. At previous board meetings this summer, Superintendent Hunter has reported on our efforts to bid and secure pricing for our electric aggregation program. We are working on an electric aggregation program update letter to go out this week to our residents, which I have, I believe, provided you an advanced copy of. Residents enrolled in the village's aggregation program may have received notice recently from ComEd that their contracts have come to an end as of June 30th of this year, and direct energy is no longer their supplier. The village has been receiving bids from suppliers and monitoring the market since May. Suppliers submitted rates ranging from 7.8 cents a kilowatt hour to 8 cents a kilowatt hour, well above the ComEd rate that is now offered of 7.59 cents a kilowatt hour. Over the last, or since our last bidding cycle two years ago, the market has changed significantly. Other communities such as Rockford, Loves Park, Belvedere, are all experiencing the same thing we are, and they are getting rates in the mid-7 cent range that we were quoted. Given the current market pricing as compared to the ComEd default rate, it is in the best interest of the program participants now to temporarily accept the ComEd default rate. The village will continue to monitor pricing from suppliers until the end of August. At that time, if an acceptable price is not found, the village will be required to continue with ComEd at the default rate for the next 10 months. In the summer of 2015, the village will once again start monitoring electricity pricing and secure the best available rates for our residents. One more item. On a very positive note, I'm pleased to report that the village has been successful in obtaining a grant from the Metropolitan Planning Agency to construct a pedestrian and bike path along Alpine Road from Lowe's south to Roosevelt Road and then continuing to our southern boundary at Schnucks. The grant award is for $620,000, covering roughly 80% of the total $820,000 project cost. We had rejected a previous grant offer by the RMAP Technical Committee of $320,000 at a 50% funding level and resubmitted with an increased project scope and cost. So the new grant award will cost the village approximately $100,000 less in local match and significantly increase the length of the path along Alpine. If engineering plans are approved in an expeditious manner by regulatory agencies, the path will be constructed in 2015. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. I'd just like to say thank you personally for all the hard work that you have done on that project. This has been a long battle, and Tim hung in there and come out a winner for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have village engineer Chris Dopkins.
Thank you, Your Honor. An update on construction projects ongoing in the village. On Queen Oaks Drive, the Rock River Water Reclamation District's contractor is approximately 2/3rds complete with their improvements. This includes testing of the pipe that they put in and services. So essentially, they're free and clear for 2/3rds of the project. Ralston Road is actually in site from where they're working right now, from Queen Oaks Drive. As the river's gone down, they've been able to make a little bit better progress. Our contractor will be mobilizing to the site tomorrow, starting to remove equipment and materials in. We have exploratory digging set up for some water mains on Wednesday and also probably lowering some water mains on Wednesday on the southern end, so the folks down there will be without water for a few hours, and we'll pass out notices to the residents to let them know. So work will begin in earnest, and for the next few weeks, there will be two contractors working on Queen Oaks Drive, probably actually the next three weeks. On Colonial Ramona, our contractor continues to make good progress today, though. We did have our first rather large surprise at the intersection of Fourth and Ramona. There were two additional phone lines that were in the ground that no one knew about, and it turns out that two of them were actually dead, thankfully, because they were in conflict with some of the improvements that we wanted to put in. However, it held the contractor up at that intersection. Fourth and Ramona will be closed this evening, and we hope to get the intersection back open yet tomorrow. So overall, they're making good progress. Couple blocks of storm sewer already in the ground. On Colonial, the contractor's at the Third and Ramona intersection with the underground. We kind of want to keep those two projects staggered by a block so that the residents have good access and the construction vehicles have good access through the construction site. That first block and a half of Colonial is rather deep storm sewer. All the utilities are in the way, so it's kind of slow going for the contractor. Once they pass Third, though, a little bit past Third, they'll start making a little bit better progress. Overall, they're doing a good job and are on schedule. Our resurfacing project, the contractor's made a lot of progress here in the last week. Actually, most of the streets that are west of Illinois 251 have been resurfaced, along with the intersection work, which was a collaborative effort between the Public Works Department and the contractor to get the Alpine Road-Gladius Drive intersection open and functioning again at the school. Work in Timberline Hollow and Silo Ridge has been ongoing the last week. A lot of curb work and concrete work has been going on up there, and today, the contractor was in to start laying leveling binder in preparation for surface course and in preparation for the scarification process. We have a number of subcontractors mobilizing to Timberline Hollow and Silo Ridge next week to begin the heater scarification process. They're going to mobilize Monday, start working on the scarification process Tuesday. That's going to carry them through the week. Fabric contractor will be on site Tuesday into Wednesday in Silo Ridge. We'll begin everything in Silo Ridge and work our way over to Timberline Hollow. We'll start placing surface on Wednesday, and we've probably got a week and a half worth of paving to do up there before everything is totally complete. Notices have been sent to all the residents, letting them know what to expect through the construction process, and hopefully they'll be happy with the results. The townage plans and specifications are ready to bid, assuming authorization is given tonight. We will open bids on the 15th of August. We will have a resolution and a recommendation for award going to both the Public Improvement Safety Committee and the board on the board meeting on the 18th of August. On Illinois 173, the contractor continues to find ways to try to make up some time that was lost due to some utility delays. Right now, we have Continental Drive, which is the target entrance, and Burden Road are both closed to traffic. They are trying to get Burden Road opened as soon as possible. Once Burden Road opens, then Forest Hills Road is going to be closed again for a period of 10 to 12 days in order to get the improvements done on the north side. We're working with the contractor right now to maybe see if it's possible to get all the improvements done on the north side of Forest Hills Road, which would help save some time, but it's a lot of work to get done in a very short closure period. So this week, please keep an eye on the media to let you know when the roads are going to be closed and open up there. Again, you know, that Burden, or that Forest Hills Road closure, that's a significant closure. On Boba Link, the contractor is done with the paving, and they'll be doing restoration this week. They're planning to be in there Thursday to get the restoration started. And then finally, on Velocity Drive, which was also paved and striped, just part of our resurfacing program, there were some hiccups on the path, and the contractor's going to be in this week, it sounds like Thursday, to do some removals, and then they're going to do some testing of the materials underneath, some of the failures, to make sure that those materials are in good shape before we get in there and replace. So there'll be a couple sections of gravel on the path for a few days until it gets paved up again, but hopefully by the end of the following week, everything will be paved up and done. That's all I have this evening, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I'm glad you have a lot of free time. Next, we have public safety coordinator Rocco Wagner.
Thank you, Your Honor. From the period of July 18th through the 31st, Sheriff's Department responded to 736 calls for service, made 224 traffic arrests, which included three DUI arrests and 47 criminal arrests. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Rocco. Next, we have committee and trustee reports. Do we have any trustee reports tonight? Trustee Snodgrass.
Thank you, Your Honor. At the Administration and Finance Committee meeting tonight, we reviewed three resolutions that will go to board on August 18th with positive recommendations, so that was good. Also, I believe all of the trustees have received in their mailboxes, from Tim, the brochure for the Small Business Development. Also this week, you should have received in your mailboxes the community ed Rock Valley College classes that are available. If any of you, you know, want to learn how to basket weave, those classes are available in there, but there's also, you know, if you have people that are entrepreneurs that are wanting to do small businesses, I would highly encourage them to get in touch with the Iger Lab and the Small Business Development Company. Rock Valley's doing some amazing things, and so take some time to look at that community ed brochure and see if there's any classes in there. We also have, we had the candidate for Lieutenant Governor in last week talking to us about some things, and we have Congressman Kinzinger coming, yes, Keinzinger coming in a couple of weeks. So we're doing lots of things, and we do put out notices to let you know when those representatives and people are coming to Rock Valley, so that's exciting. Rock Valley's also doing National Night Out tomorrow night, so unfortunately, because of my position with them, I have to be there, and we are expecting about 1,100, and I know that yours is much more organized than ours is because it's going to be quite an interesting thing for the first time that we've done it. We're working with the Rockford Police Department, or Rock Valley Police Department is, so. And then the last thing I wanted to tell you is if any of you have questions on the articles that you see in the paper or any of the information, our zoning board of commissioners was amazing the other night, and they listened to all of the residents. It is a very big issue, the issue that'll be coming up now in September. So if you want to talk about it or see any of the information that I have from 2006, I do have some of that information, and I would love to hear from you and get your thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Snodgrass. Is there any other reports? Trustee Kidd.
The Planning and Economic Development Committee, Ordinance 2114, has been moved with a positive recommendation to the August 18th board meeting. Also, 6:30 tomorrow night, Village Hall. Am I right on that, Chris?
You are.
Sewer hookup in the Trang Residence area are having a meeting, so everybody's welcome to attend if you're not going to Night Out. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Kidd. Trustee Wilson.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just want to welcome again our residents from Hawksview for being here and actually staying for the board meeting. Thanks for being with us. We appreciate it, and we'll see you in the future here, working to become real good friends, I get a feeling. Also like to report that I had a chance to announce the State Street Mile on Saturday, and I wouldn't normally bring this up in the meeting, but as I was going through the winners of the heats and the categories, nine of the 42 were Machesney Park residents, so we've got some fast mile runners here in the village. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Is there any more reports? I see none. The next item for consideration is the consent agenda. Are there any items that a trustee would like removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately? Trustee Kidd.
I would like the village striping and services to be talked about separately, please.
Item D will move to unfinished business. Is that correct?
Do we move that to new business? New business.
New business. Thank you. Is there any other items the trustee wishes to be removed from the consent agenda? I see none. The consent agenda is accepted, all items except D under consent agenda. A, B, C, and E is accepted. I will entertain a motion to approve all items under the consent agenda.
So made. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
The consent agenda consists of item A. It's a second and final reading of Ordinance 19-14, a variance to the front yard setbacks from 33 feet to 24 feet and 33 feet to 18 feet at 1327 Catalina Road. Item B is Resolution 52R14, authorization to purchase three squad cars from Landmark Ford, not to exceed $90,000. Item C is Resolution 53R14, authorize the police contract for law enforcement services with Winnebago County in the amount of $3,142,924. Item D has been moved to new business. Item E is Resolution 56R14, authorization for the village engineer to publicly bid the reconstruction of townage. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. Is there any trustee discussions? I see none. Will the clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Tammon.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Mayor Bowlin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
The consent agenda has been approved. Next, we have new business. We have line item D from the consent agenda first, Resolution 55-R14, village street striping services. I entertain a motion to adopt.
So made. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Thank you. The village advertised for a request for proposals in the June 20th Rockford Register Star. Those proposals were due back by Monday, July 14th. The RFP requested prices for eight separate categories of pavement markings. It was for a three-year contract, and that would be based on budgetary limitations. The village received two responses prior to that deadline. They received responses, well, the staff recommended entering into a contract with Tricky Enterprises for a three-year term. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Is there any trustee discussions? Trustee Kidd.
Do we anticipate that to be going over $20,000 per year over the next three years because it went out publicly in the newspaper?
Staff have an answer for that?
Typically, it's no more than $10,000 a year. That would be a large year.
And did we, since it was publicized, did we have a public opening of all the bids that took place, or both bids? The reading of the winner of the contract was done publicly, or was it done behind closed doors?
It was a request for proposals. It wasn't a public bid opening. The responses were included in the packets that went to the A&amp;F Committee.
So that's where my error is.
It was an RFP.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any more discussion?
It's ringing.
I see.
I just want to address the question about the $30,000. We only authorize so much striping to be done per year. This is for the, this number that's been submitted is for the cost of the service. However, the amount spent each year can go up or down depending on budgetary constraints or how much we want done. So on an annual basis, we're not spending over typically $10,000.
Is there any more discussion? I hear none. Will the clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Tammon.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Mayor Bowlin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
Resolution 55-R-14 has been adopted. Next, we have Ordinance 22-14, disposal of property for first reading. I entertain a motion to approve.
So made. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Thank you. Ordinance 22-14 is a disposal of property ordinance. This ordinance will allow us to trade in our current 2001 Bobcat towards our replacement skid steer. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Kidd.
Trustee Kidd.
During the last meeting, I saw you speak at the committee level. You said that it had multiple breakdowns recently. What were the multiple breakdowns, and what was the cost?
Who are you talking to?
Superintendent Hunter.
Well, since I've taken over, we haven't been using the skid steer very often. The breakdowns were prior to me taking over, so I can't really speak to that.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussions? Trustee Wilson.
I just want to say anytime I have questions like that, I always feel comfortable calling Chad, Tim, or the administration. They're very good at getting the answers to those questions in a timely fashion.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Is there any more discussion? I hear none. Will the clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Tammon.
Aye.
Mayor Bowlin.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays.
Ordinance 22-14 has been approved for first reading. Trustee Yo.
Thank you, Your Honor. This time, I'd like to move that we waive the rules and bring Ordinance 22-14 back for a second reading so that we can use this as part of the trade-in.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Will the clerk take roll call on the motion to suspend the rules and bring this back for second reading?
Trustee Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Tammon.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Six ayes and no nays.
Motion is carried. We have Ordinance 22-14, disposal of property for second reading. I entertain a motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussions? I hear none. Will the clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Yo.
Aye.
Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Taman.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
I got two votes now.
I meant to say Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Ordinance 22-14 has been approved for second reading. Next, we have Resolution 54-R14, authorize purchase of skid steer load. I'll entertain a motion to adopt.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I have staff report, please?
Thank you. Resolution 54-R14 is to authorize the purchase of a skid steer. This resolution authorizes the village administrator to purchase a 2014 John Deere 320E skid steer from Westside Tractor for a net price of $33,000 after trade-in. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Is there any discussions? I see none. Will the clerk take roll call, please?
Trustee Beck.
Aye.
Snodgrass.
Aye.
Taman.
Aye.
Kidd.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye.
Yo.
Aye.
Mayor Boland.
Aye.
Seven ayes and no nays.
Resolution 54-R14 has been adopted. Next, we have motion to fund the Machesney Park Family Festival. I entertain a motion to approve.
So made.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there a staff report?
Just minimal. We discussed this a bit at the committee level at the last meeting. The festival has taken place. It took place last Saturday, and there's a number of levels of funding that were requested by the Friends of Machesney Park, and the $1,000 level is kind of the mid-range, that's all.
Thank you, Tim. Attorney Green.
Just to clarify, I, the motion is to fund it at $1,000, is that correct?
I believe that's what.
That's what came out.
Right. That was what was published.
Okay, because I didn't see that actually written here, so is the motion, can we just do a friendly amendment to the motion to include at $1,000?
At $1,000 level.
And is that acceptable to the second?
Yes.
Okay, so just for the record, note that the motion is identified as $1,000 in it. Thank you.
Can you say that or you already said it?
I think I already said it.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the trustees on this? Trustee Yo.
Yes, I have, I have one question, I guess. When they were here at the committee meeting, we, we had a representative here talking about expectations, and normally when we, when we give out this kind of information, we get a post-event report in terms of how the money was used, et cetera, et cetera. Did we receive that, or is that because of the close proximity not been compiled yet? Or, I guess that's what I'm asking, you know. A, what was the, you know, was the attendance? When I was there, it was very early and it wasn't very heavy, but attendance, and we'd ask them if it was going, if their plan was to be self-sufficient, and if they were able to attain that. I guess that's all tied up into one big question.
Yeah, I think the, and I'll speak for a nonprofit organization. I believe that they will be happy to give you a report when that is all compiled. They have a timeline date that they have to do that anyway for the permit.
Okay. Normally, we receive that, but I realize we had a time, you know, so I guess that's what I was bringing up. Thank you.
Is there any more discuss, uh, trustee Kidd?
Is it wise to table that until we get the report? I'm asking for experienced leadership over there.
Trustee Beck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Early on, you know, when we had our budget meetings and stuff, we talked about various things that we were going to fund, you know, to help community events throughout the community, and we doled out some pretty good money to some of the different groups. To me, $1,000 to this group to help them get started, to have family events in Machesney is not a big price to pay, so I'll be voting yes. Thank you.
Trustee Snodgrass.
Thank you, Your Honor. During that discussion, though, we did talk about accountability, and I think it's very important that we do receive reports for all of the monies that we give out, much like the report we received with the $10,000 from HCC. Thank you very much, Michelle. I would like to see reports for all of those monies that we give out like that. So, I would, I would, I'm, will support this, but I, I don't know if we can amend it to say, you know, we need a report, or how that would work.
There could be, there could be another opportunity for a report, since this is determining whether or not you want to allocate the money to it, it still has to show up on the warrant, and so that has not been done. It would be put on the warrant in the future, you know, at the next meeting, and then paid out at that time.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment. My experience in these matters, as we have funded various opportunities, various activities like this, is we fund in advance, and then we get the reports at, at the end, and then we, you know, how did it go? So, really, we're, you know, we're late in the funding. Normally, we would fund in advance and expect, and absolutely should, get a report from the organization, but I don't think, you know, they're ready to hold the funding, is my point.
And, and my intent is not to hold up any funding. That's, that's not even what I was after. My intent was, A, make sure that we were getting that report because that hadn't been discussed at the previous meeting in, in length, and number two, to see how we came out relative to the plan of being self-sufficient. So, that was my intent of the original comments that I made. I will not.
Trustee Wilson.
I'm going to be voting no tonight, and the reason being is because I think to a voter's perspective, we're funding something after it's already taken place, and I would have liked to have funded this before it happened and had a more sturdy plan as to what we were going to do with it. Attendance was lackluster, I understand it was the first event, and I want to see more things happen here in the village, I really do. I just want ironclad plans and how we're going to make those successful and have hundreds, maybe even thousands of people attend them.